We'll take call to order our February School Board meeting. Welcome. Thank you all for coming this evening. Thank you for all that you do. We're gonna have a pledge of allegiance and the invocation at this time. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands as one nation under God, indivisible, and every being and every creature.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this occasion. We thank you, God, just for New Year and the beginning and the start. And as we come, I would preach you bless still those countries at war, those that have lost their loved ones, especially three Americans. Also, God, touch those areas of country that have really experienced shootings, that you would touch those families and heal those families. Pray that you look down on the school family, touch those that are sick, that you will continue to give them great recovery. Bless our community. We thank you for all the grants and the foresight of the future that's coming in, how you blessing our area. Now, God bless this meeting. Bless our purpose, God, that everything done might be done to your glory. Thank you for everything, for the great work of our teachers and families and students. Thank you for all the many accolades passed month. We pray that you just bless this meeting for your purpose, in Jesus' name, amen.
All right, do we have any registered speakers, Ms. Smith? All right, this evening, our community focus, we have Angela Harrison here from the Capa Delta Omega Chapter of the Alpha, Kappa, Alpha Sorority. Think I got that right. Okay, welcome.
Angela's one of our teachers returning back home.
Okay.
Real excited.
I am. You embarrassed me by saying that. Didn't mean to start it off. Extra pressure.
We're happy to have you back home.
I'm glad to be back home. So I am Angela Harrison, and I serve as Vice President of Capa Delta Omega Chapter of Alpha Kappa Sorority here in Martinsville, Virginia. And I'm excited to be here with you all this evening to share a focus on two of our areas of focus under our Power Our Family Initiative. We do have six initiatives that we focus on. The one that I will be talking about is under Power Our Families. One of the reasons is because Alpha Kappa Alpha does believe in supporting families, understanding that a healthy family is the foundation of healthy communities. So with that in mind, we focus on a multi-generational approach where we look at from babies up to adulthood. And we look at childhood hunger, we look at leadership in our adolescence, mental health and well-being, and also in our senior life. But for the purposes of tonight, I'll be focusing on our younger children, our CHIP program, which stands for Childhood Hunger Initiative Power Pack, where we partner with an elementary school and we provide nutritious meals for students in need over the weekend and on holidays. We make sure those meals are non-perishable, make sure they can handle it on their own, not much preparation, so the students, children will be able to do that on their own. It's meals and a snack that we provide for them. Because we recognize that at this point, there are about 16 million children who are actually suffering and going without food or they are struggling and are hungry. So we want to focus on feeding our babies. And our next focus is on our adolescents. And that is our Youth Leadership Institute, or YLI, and that's our youth from ages 11 through 13. With that program, it's focused on youth-led. We want to be there to support the youth. We want to help them to become leaders in our community. Our program is youth-led, it's experiential, it's fun, it's the young school. And they also are responsible during a service project and a final presentation at the end of the year. One of the things that they can do is work with us as we are also, we have been tasked to plant a tree every year. And we planted our first tree last year at Carver Elementary. So we're looking for different areas that we can plant our trees each year. So if you know many places you want to submit, we'd be happy to do that. So our early adolescents supporting 15,000 youth to help them become healthy, independent, and personal empowerment. They work on three modules through the year. It starts in September, goes through June. The first one focuses on the foundation of leadership and success. The second engagement and exploration, discovering, self-expression. And our third and final one, using the power of purpose to drive success. And as I said, we do make sure that we are there to support them. It's, the program's gonna be, it's once a month on a Saturday, Saturday morning. And we want to be there, as I said, to ensure that we're just there to support the youth. We give them guidance on the things that they can do as with their programs or things they want to do in the community. But we leave it up to them to do those things, whether it be a vision board or whether it be, it may not be they want to plant a tree. Maybe they'll come up with something else they want to do. But we're there to support them each month. They can become, they can be 10 years old entering the program as long as they turn 11 within that first, within that year. And they can be 13 and about to age out. But we want to continue, it continues each year because we want to continue to, if we get them at that 10-year-old, if we get them through age 13, 14, then we have some very developed youth that are unable to be in the community. So those are the two, because we are focused on our elementary and towards our middle school students at the moment. So those are the two that I wanted to focus on for this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any comments, anyone? Questions?
No, we appreciate the work that you do with the young people and again, appreciate the pride that you were one of many and you're talented. Just gonna get a count of camp, remember I mentioned we have a, y'all even remember the alumni that we have that came back home to teach. And I think that's important to reach the same community where you grew up in.
That was one of the reasons I wanted to come back, because I graduated Martinsville in 1986. My daughter also graduated Martinsville High School in 2004. She is now married and has a new son. So it is wanting to, to be back in the community where I grew up.
We know Dr. Brown is staffed, appreciate you. So we appreciate you.
Thank you so much for your time.
All right, as we all know, February is a busy month. And this month, we have our School Board Clerk Appreciation Week. And we'd like to thank the clerk and deputy clerk. So if you ladies would come up here, we have a couple of things for you all. All right, this is from Virginia School Board Association saying that we appreciate your dedication, hard work for public education, for continuing services to our students. Yes, okay, sorry.
Thank you so much.
And Myanna. Thank you all. We really appreciate all you do, and we couldn't do it without you.
We really appreciate you guys. You want a picture? You guys work so hard. I want to say that Joe, most of the time, he worked most of the time. They work very hard. Thank you ladies.
I'll let you take the lead.
Right. In addition, fair words also, School Board Appreciation Week, and I want to thank all the principals of the schools. And they did some different things this year, and that was fine because the ladies at Fairway allowed them to do whatever they felt like they wanted to do. To honor School Board, I want to say that School Board just works countless hours. And it's not a lot of other things that really make the superintendent enjoy his job, when you have School Board workers who support him. And you could work, they also under a lot of pressure because a lot of times we make decisions that are hard decisions. But I'm very thankful that this board has not waited, been so supportive of whatever we had to do. Because I can honestly say we have people here who love students. A lot of people say that, that in a lot of meetings, what people said, it did the total opposite. But I can honestly say, this is a board that the people that you see here that really want to do what's best for students. And so it's always a joy to do that and to work with these young people. So we want to honor them, and as I call their names, I want them to come forward. And we want to recognize our School Board members. So let's give them a hand. And I want to say to the public that they work more than hours that you see them here for meetings. That there are countless of hours and calls that go on behind the scene. And I want to appreciate everybody so much for the hard work. So as I call your name, if you would, come forward and we want to recognize you. Our chairman, Ms. Yvonne Givens. Our vice chair, Mr. Michael Williamson. And of course, young lady's very special, Nikia Blackwell. All of these young people have not only been on the board, but they have also been involved with our young people in band or athletics or something. And so these are people who really know our community and our young people. And I think that's the thing that makes them so much special. Not only are they on the board, they work with young people and teachers. So again, I'm really very thankful for this board. Thank you.
What's your name? Miss Keine, for one minute there, it went out the door. We also appreciate the other two School Board members that were not able to be with us this evening. And hopefully, they'll be able to be back with us next month. There's one other group that we would like to recognize. And we have educators at, wait, how can I speak? American Education Week, we have Teacher Appreciation Week, we have Bus Driver Appreciation, we have Principals Appreciation, we have Vice Principals Appreciation. We have School Board Appreciation, we have School Board Clerk Appreciation. But there's not one of those for the cabinet. And we would like to recognize our cabinet members and have a little make of our own cabinet appreciation month. So we're appreciating everything in the month. So when I call your name, we have a small little gift for you and a little plaque if you'll come on up. Mr. Clemmons, would you join us?
Congratulations.
Thank you. And a little something for you. Thank you. Dr. Cynthia Tarpley.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Dr. Angelie Downing.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you so much.
And can I just say again, this, this group, I said.
I'm not done.
I always talk about that.
Interrupting. We talk to you skills. Dr. Tally. You're welcome.
Thank you.
I just want to say to cabinet, this is the first time that the board has done anything for cabinet. And I would be very remiss if I let this opportunity go. And I want to thank them because our cabinet meetings are special. They help to make very hard decisions, they're experts in what they do in the field. And some decisions are popular, some are not. But the support is always there. And this is my group, and this is why we look so good, is because these guys are so sharp. So I just want to say that this is the first time a board has ever done anything for them. And I'm just text, I mean, I think it's great. And I thank you for that. Thank the board for it.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
You know, I'm just picking my.
I appreciate this. I'm very good.
All right. Let's move on to the information agenda. We have Ms. Keine with some CTE updates.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for putting me on the agenda. Since this also is the month of celebration of everything, also, this is celebration of CTE, Career Technical Education Month as well. So a few things with our department. In the celebration of CTE Month, we started our, opened our second school-based enterprise called Stitchify that happened January 31st. We've got some great media coverage over there. Our students are tickled pink and, ooh, the work is, just keeps coming in. Just a background, if you hadn't seen any of the information, our starting budget was $720. And that money came from our last year Career Expo and also our classes at the middle school, which is a Making Your Business. And our high school course is Entrepreneurship, where our students create a business, create a product, and sell. So our starting budget was $720. My initial goal for the kennel and Stitchify was $5,000 at the end of the semester. We are now currently at approximately $15,500. In the student's presentation, they decided that their new goal was 25, and they forgot to tell Ms. Keine. And so. So out there in social media, please order your shirts from Stitchify. Please contact me if you need an order. So hopefully, we can make 25,000 by the end of semester. It is a really big reach, but they are very, they're hungry. And so let's see what happens. And I'm gonna support them in everything that we have. Also, we as the CTE department would like to also thank Carter Bank and Trust for bestowing a contribution that also helped for that number to go up, which was $11,250. We're very thankful, and those funds are going to be used in a very useful manner, and I will tell you that in a minute. Also with CTE, I am presently in the process of starting a mobile kennel with approval. I'm in the Process Department with Dr. Tarpley, which is supporting our students with disabilities with work-based learning by April. I'm trying to get through a few things first before I can start another kennel. If I can just get a few things off my plate, like the plate, might be one of those things. The next thing that we're also working on is now that we have two school-based enterprises and we now have funds that can now sustain both enterprises. I'm currently working on a student entrepreneurship startup program. I'm also in communication with the Chamber of Commerce, how they do their startup program for entrepreneurs and small businesses. We're looking to copy or create our own program for our students where I can now be able to support and fund two to three students starting their own business. That's what those funds are for. Those funds are not just to, say, we collected money from shirts or providing a space for teachers. It's also to take that money and put it back into our students that need support. And entrepreneurship is work-based learning, and you can learn a lot on how to run a business and be part of a business from being an entrepreneur. One of the last things that we have is internships. I am pleased to announce with support from Tanya Forman, Tanya Forman from Eastman, our own Martinsville Chamber of Commerce, Brenell Thomas, and Robbie Knight from West P. Mont, Virginia Career Works, that in 2024, 2025, our Rising Seams will now have the opportunity to participate in paid internships with manufacturing companies such as Eastman, Crown, and Press Glass. If it wasn't for those people, bringing everyone to the table and having those conversations and talking to the lawyers, we would not have this opportunity. I am going to put out information right before students register for classes. There is a requirement. And students have to meet the requirement, but they will not be by themselves. They also will be competing with the county schools. So our students will be prepared to interview. They will go through an interview process, and they will be getting paid. So CTE is doing a lot. Those are, that's a few things that we have on our plate. And are there any questions?
You're doing a great job. We really appreciate it.
Oh, thank you.
With these manufacturers, you said they're gonna be paid.
Yes.
Internships.
Yes.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
How many hours a day?
I said it again.
How many hours a day will they be?
We're looking at two blocks a day. Really, we already know 90 minutes a day is not enough time to get a student started in a classroom, yes, but to travel, to get there, to get started, to get trained. So we're looking at two blocks a day, two blocks in the morning or two blocks in the afternoon. Again, there are requirements. There's are some safety issues that students will have to go through some training. Because again, this is a manufacturing business. So once I have all the criteria and the requirements, those that go out and those students that meet those requirements will go through an interview process with myself. And then they'll go through an interview process with the county. With the county keys are part of it, so our keys are competing in the real world. And that's just not competing with our own students that are competing just like people in the real world.
Questions, Sean? Will the young people get credits?
Yes. It's also work-based learning. It'll be connected to a class, and they will get credit for the class.
And with your program, are you willing to reach out to others in the manufacturing sector or other businesses that want students?
Yes.
Can we stay to that?
I am on the process of contacting people again, because we'll start off with, it is a lot to have a student. And to go through the process of having a student as an intern. So some people want to deal with it, and some people do not want to deal with it. So you have to, you gotta play nice for a little while. But I am in the process of contacting companies to see if they're interested, if paid or unpaid. That's why we also have our school-based enterprises for those students that can't travel, for those students that need work-based learning activities or practice. They can be a part of those enterprises if we can't get them out in communities. And of course, before I leave, you know we are doing the musical next week. Please come, please come. I am drowning under the sea with these children and singing fish. But it's gonna be a great show, as always. The students have worked very hard. Also, think about our CTE and work-based learning. Our students have also been preparing with Little Mermaid, with building, and they are excited. When I say building, they help with starting the process of design, set design and colors, what to put on stage, what not to put on stage, even down to costuming. So please come out March 1st, 2nd, or 3rd to support our students and Little Mermaid. And of course, this weekend, in celebration of Black History Month, Martinsville High School Gospel Choir will be opening for Virginia State University at Patrick Henry Community College. The event is at 4:00 at Walton Theater. Please come and support our students. Are there any questions?
Is it Saturday?
Saturday, yes. I will have it, give it to Cali, our media, and have it posted on our school's website, and I'll have it posted as much as I can.
Thank you so much for all you do this time. We really appreciate you.
Thank you.
All right, under information as well, we are going to invite each one of our schools to come up and tell us about their improvement plan while you're here. I'd like to also, we would all like to hear about what your school is doing for Black History Month. So please share some of those things with us as well. First up, we have Albert Harris and Dr. Renee Brown.
I didn't click last year. Good afternoon, Vicki. We are so proud to be here before you to explain our comprehensive school improvement plan for the 2023-2024 school year. For the 2023-2024 school year, our accreditation status is fully accredited. We were at Level 1 in academically, we were at Level 1 academically for English and mathematics, Level 2 for science. With our achievement gap, who was at Level 2 for English and Level 1 for mathematics. And with our chronic accentism, we were at Level 2. Albert Harris overall academic achievement combined was grades 3 through 5. Our reading was at 82%, our math was at 80%, and our science was at 60%. If you recall, last year when we came up here, we was at 25% in science. But we have brought that up tremendously, and we still have work to do with that. Albert Harris Achievement Gap for Reading is as follows. Black students was at 79%, economically disadvantaged students was at 80%, our English language learners was at 97%, as well as our Hispanic students. Our multirace students was at 55%, our students with disabilities was at 73%, and our white students was at 85%. Albert Harris Elementary School Achievement Gap for Math is as follows. Our black students was at 78%, our economically disadvantaged students was at 79%, our English language learners was at 97%, our Hispanic students was at 94%, our multirace students were at 82%, our students with disabilities was at 75%, and our white students was at 63%. Now, we do have measurable goals, and our first goal for our English language arts or reading. By the end of the 2023-2024 academic school year, we would like to have at least 100% of Albert Harris Elementary students achieving a proficient or advanced score on the reading standards of learning assessments. We're gonna provide additional focus on our students with disabilities and our multiraced children. Our goal number two for math is by the end of the 2022, 20, I'm sorry, 2023-2024 academic school year, we would like to have at least 100% of Albert Harris Elementary Schools students achieving a proficient or advanced scores on the math standards of learning assessments. With additional focus on our white students. Our goal three is for science. By the end of the 2023-2024 academic school year, at least 100% of Albert Harris Elementary students will achieve a proficient or advanced score on our science standard of learning assessment. And our goal four is chronic accentism. By the end of the 2023-2024 academic school year, we would hope to have reduced our accentism by 10%. And the reason why I said 100% on all of our goals is because I had the privilege to go to the VASCD conference, and I listened to one of the keynote speakers. We all know that with our reading SOL scores, the state's standing 75%, and with our math and our science is 70%. And those are, most of the times, those are the goals that we set. But the speaker had me thinking about something, and I did speak with different people about it. When you plan for 75% or 70% students passing, what are you saying about the other 25 or 30%? Are we planning for those students to fail? So my new philosophy is we don't plan for 100% of our students to pass. If we do not get that, we'll work on it, but we are not planning to fail any students. Okay, our action steps for reaching our reading goal is to ensure that lesson plans and assessments are aligned with the curriculum framework by monitoring and providing feedback on a weekly basis through collaborative and data meetings. We're gonna provide differentiation of instruction daily through small groups and individual instruction. We're gonna monitor co-teaching, push-in and push-out services, and differentiation of instruction through observation, lesson plans, collective work. and differentiation of instruction through observation, lesson plans, collaboration and data meeting attendance. And what's new this year, we're going to utilize the all-in tutoring Lexia program in grades three through five. Um, this is a new reading program that, um, the state has funded for all schools, I think instead of a junior to use. And we are under Dr. Dallas' tutelage with this program. Um, our goal step, action steps for goal number two. We're going to ensure that all, um, we're going to ensure that lesson plans and assessments are aligned with the curriculum framework by monitoring and providing feedback on a weekly basis through collaborative and data meetings. We're going to provide differentiation of instruction daily through small groups and individual instruction. We're going to monitor with co-teaching and push-in, pull-out services and differentiation of instruction through observation, lesson plans, collaboration and data meetings. And again, we're going to be utilizing all-in tutoring Zern program from kindergarten through fifth grade. We've already started utilizing Zern, um, in grades three through five and we're going to add kindergarten through second grade, sort of the kindergarten through fifth grade. Um, for science, our goal is as follows. We're going to monitor, ensure that science instruction is aligned with the curriculum framework in grades kindergarten through fifth. We're going to monitor co-teaching, push-in services, differentiation of instruction through observation, lesson plans, collaboration and data meetings attendance. We're going to increase the academic and frequency of our science lessons. And we started on this last year where, um, um, in grades three through five, we used to alternate days. Like one day you might have science and one week you may have science and next week you might have social studies. However, now in our schedule, we have science every single day. We do not alternate. We have a block for science through grades through five, three through five, I'm sorry. Um, teachers will collaborate with STEM teacher to align STEM lessons with core lessons in the classroom with curriculum framework. We ensure that our lesson plans and assessments are aligned with the curriculum framework. Um, concentrating on grades four through five, that all of our lessons should be aligned with curriculum framework. Um, we're going to increase hands-on application of science manipulatives and utilize the science lab more. And we're going to monitor science data with all subgroups. Um, for our goal, our action steps for our fourth goal is we're going to continue sending, sending attendance letters to students' parents following the Martinsville City Public School Policy. We're going to have our resource officer to conduct wellness checks for chronically absent students. We're utilizing our community departments and resources for intervention. We have started our check-in and check-out plans for attendance. Clubs and all other act, after-student activities are tied into attendance. If a child doesn't attend school, we don't let them participate in our extracurricular activities. Um, we would, um, Albert Harris Elementary School will continue to offer incentives for perfect attendance and that's classroom attendance, individual attendance. We have attendance parties which consist of pizza parties, popcorn parties, cookie parties and movie parties. We also have awards, rewards and prizes. We have a bicycle giveaway. And we also utilize dojo flag, um, for classroom attendance. And I put some of these pictures up here because I want you all to see a day in the life of Albert Harris Elementary School. Our students do participate in a lot of activities and a lot of spirit weeks, um, kindness weeks. They have programs. So I just thought I'd throw a few pictures up there so you all could see what we're doing. This is the end of my presentation. Do you all have any questions for me? Well, if not, as they say in church, if all minds are clear, thank you for your time.
Can you tell us a little bit about what you're doing for Black History Month?
Well, certainly I can. I just kind of wrote that. Okay. We have several activities going on for our Black History Month. Starting off in the morning, every morning, African-Americans are featured during our morning announcements. During our announcements, African-Americans are, um, highlighted for, um, contributions that they've made to America and to society. They are highlighted in the fields of education, science, mathematics, technology, arts, entertainment and sports. Also, Albert Harris Elementary School have what we call a Wall of African-American Fame. This wall was created to highlight more accomplishments of various African-Americans that children may or may not have heard of. Teachers are integrating both fiction and non-fiction texts that's highlighting African-American, the African-American experience during this particular month. Third, fourth and fifth grade students toured Fahy, the African-American museum and was treated to a vivid historical account of the, um, African-American history in Martinsville and Henry County. And they also learned about famous African-American descendants right here from Martinsville who made a difference in our community and the nation as a whole. And this particular, um, visit to the Fahy Museum, it was concluded with a scavenger hunt. You know, my, um, Fahy has a new directoress and she has revamped her program. And after she showed and demonstrated all the things that African-Americans have done in this community, they had a, um, a scavenger hunt within the museum. Now, on Thursday, Thursday, February twenty-seventh, from five-thirty to six-thirty, Albert Harris Elementary School was, we are proud to present our gospel choir. So move over high school. Albert Harris has a gospel choir. They're going to be doing their first concert starting at five-thirty. And once the concert is over, then we invite you to go to our African-American Living Wax Museum. This is a fifth grade project that all fifth graders look forward to. You will go to our cafeteria when you push the button and you will meet all types of African-Americans, all types of people that has, um, done great things for our country. So again, these are some of the things that we're doing for Black History Month and we invite you to come on Thursday at five-thirty to six-thirty P. M. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Patrick Henry and Mrs. Cooper.
Thank you, guys.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How are y'all?
Good, great.
Good. All right. I'm here to present our comprehensive school improvement plan, our continuous school improvement plan. Um, I'll start with our indicators. If you'll notice that, um, we had almost all of our indicators at a level one. Our overall English and mathematics achievement was at a level one. For English, it has to be seventy-five percent or above and for math, seventy percent above. Uh, science was not where it needed to be. I'll talk a little about science in a minute. For our achievement gaps, uh, English was at a level one, although we had one subgroup that fell to a level two. I'll talk about what we're doing for that subgroup. For math, all, you'll see our subgroups here in just a minute. All of our subgroups were at a level one, which means they scored higher than seventy percent. Except for one subgroup, students disability subgroup fell to a level three, which would be under sixty-five percent. Um, so that's why we were only at level two. Our chronic absenteeism ended at a level one, which is under fifteen percent chronically absent. Last year, we ended at fourteen percent chronically absent. Currently, we're at eleven percent chronically absent. And so our goal was to be under, uh, was to reduce last year's rate by ten percent. So that would be reducing it to twelve percent and we check it every ten days. Um, so I'm very happy to say that we ended at a level one last year and throughout this entire school year, we've remained at a level one. And that's where we projected to be for this year. Uh, we do a lot with just tracking students, um, and meeting with them, uh, providing interventions for the family or the students for any, um, uh, chronically absent students who are having some struggles. Uh, but we continue to monitor that data and provide interventions as needed. Um, these are our, um, past three years for, uh, performance bracketing and achievement. Um, you can see reading upticked last year by one percentage point. Not enough for us. Definitely not where we want to be. Uh, math has had a downward trend. However, math this year is our stronger of the two out of reading and math. Well, uh, science is really the strongest. Uh, science, uh, for two years, I'll talk about science and more in a little bit. But, um, science was, is our weakest and we've owned that and we've worked really hard to improve that for the past two years. Uh, math and science continue to be our strongest this year, surprisingly, uh, because we've done a lot of work with reading. But it's kind of like the ebb and flow of everything. You know, it just, you start working, focus on one and one may, you know, so we're trying to balance all those pieces. Doing a lot of significant work, but I'm talking about some long-range goals that we're working on, not just some short-term fixes. Uh, here are, um, achievement gap percentages or, um, level ratings for each one of those. You'll see for English and for math. Again, for English to be at a level one, it's got to be a seventy-five percent or higher and all of the subgroups were at a level one, except for students with disabilities who fell out of level two and that one was actually at a sixty-nine percent. So it was within six percentage points, but that has been an area we've tried to work on and make some changes to. And then for math, all of our, um, indicators are at a level one, except for students with disabilities, which again was at a, uh, level three. We've done a lot of work with students disabilities subgroup, uh, with children who need extra support, um, and done a lot with co-teaching, where you have the special education teacher and the classroom teacher planning together and teaching together. So when you go in the classroom, you see two teachers. If you don't know any difference, you're, you don't know which one is necessarily the classroom teacher, which one's the special education teacher. And then you can't sit there and identify, oh, these are the students who get extra support versus these are, you know, general ed students. So a lot of work with that. So being with their peers, learning alongside of their peers with prior support. So tag teaming back and forth and it's, it is phenomenal to see the relationships, particularly third, fourth and fifth grade of the co-teaching teams that we have and the strength that it has provided, not only to build the capacity within the teachers, but the strength for the students. So really to see the movement of students. Currently, if you look student by student by student from beginning of the year through multiple sessions throughout the year, you see movement. They may not necessarily be at the benchmark we want them to be at currently, but we definitely see movement. And that's attributed to the co-teaching pieces that they've done together and significant, uh, planning by the whole team and the teacher to make sure that all students provided with the instruction that they need. So our goals for this year, and, um, several years ago, uh, I had to attend a, um, a training and, uh, we worked with somebody who could really well teach us how to write the best goals and I've just stuck with that. But somebody from the States had how to write it, so I've just stuck with that and it really does help. Just really focused on specific pieces that we want to focus on within the school. So our overall goal is to increase student performance on the English SOL test from eighty percent last year to ninety percent this year and math from seventy-six percent to eighty-six percent as evidenced by the 2024 spring SOL, ELA and mathematics test. And then increase the overall student performance rate by twenty percent in science. So forty-six percent was our past rate last year. We want to make it to sixty-six percent. It sure gets us to a level two. If our current data or data throughout the whole year, our benchmark data indicates, we will surpass that. Uh, science is doing really phenomenal this year for fourth and fifth grade and that is evidenced by the 2024 SOL science test. Um, we also are, have a big focus at Patrick Henry of not just on third, fourth and fifth grades because we just don't start teaching in third grade. I mean, you've got our, our kids who come from Clearview and other preschools and then we're hitting the ground running with K one, two, with ensuring that we have, uh, reading benchmarks and math benchmarks for them to meet. So when they go to the next grade level, they are prepared. If we're waiting to measure things in third grade, then we are significantly behind. So we are really working this, every year to decrease the amount of PALS identify, which is the phonological awareness and literacy assessment that Virginia uses. So identify the amount of students needed that are identified as needing extra reading support and that's evidenced by the 2024 PALS reading assessment. So our first goal for, um, English language arts and student achievement in the black subgroup on the ELA SOL test will increase about ten percentage points from eighty to ninety percent. And student achievement in the students disability subgroup on the ELA test will increase ten percentage points as well from sixty-nine to seventy-nine percent. And then we're also again, looking to decrease the overall amount of PALS identified from ten percent in the fall to the spring as measured by the 2024 PALS assessments. So how do we do that? We have weekly collaborative planning and use of aligned resources, obviously data tracking. And if, if we don't know where our students are, we don't know how to provide interventions and support. So obviously keeping, uh, track of the data and collection with a focus on reading to learn and following the science of reading. So students, all of us, you know, we, there's a way that our bodies and our brains learn how to read. You can't just, you can't skip over steps. You've got to follow the natural process and teach and use the appropriate strategies to teach students how to read. So right now, looking at our mid-year PALS data, kindergarten, first and second grade, eighty-five percent of students in kindergarten and second grade and eighty-four percent of students in first grade are meeting or exceeding the benchmark right now, meeting or exceeding the benchmark, which is phenomenal. That shows that what we're doing with them is what needs to happen. Now, our plan is working on maintaining those students, but then making sure these fifteen, sixteen percent are providing interventions they need. So when they move to the next grade level, the gap isn't that big. So that ensures that when it comes time to, we're, we're moved away from learning to read to reading to learn, we're still not learning to read. You know, we're moving at the appropriate pace to provide with that intervention and I'm happy to say that that is what we are doing. Um, a lot of work is focused around that. So we ensure that when they get to third grade, that they are ready to, you're reading to learn. We have kindergartners reading, first graders reading. It is, is wonderful. And so we are looking long-term. We are looking long-term. We see that the groups of students who are coming up are going to be prepared to excel as they prepare to take these SOL tests. For, um, our second goal for math, so again, our biggest subgroups is, is the black subgroup and economic disadvantaged subgroup and then students disabilities always tends to be a bugger before, so we make sure we stay focused on those. So student achievement in the black subgroup as measured by the math SOL test will increase ten percentage points from seventy to eighty. And student achievement in the students with disabilities subgroup, which we fell out of level three for last year, will increase twelve percentage points from a fifty-eight to a seventy, which would get us to a level one. So how do we get there? So that's making sure that we're all, all teachers have clarity when it comes to our math instruction. Are we clear how to deliver these math standards to know that our students can take and apply those same strategies and have the appropriate skills when they are presented problems throughout, throughout the year and on their math test. And that comes from us having weekly collaborative planning, use of our aligned resources and our assessments and following what the framework says that we need to do in order to ensure that our students are prepared for that. Um, and then Zern time, which is used K through five now, it's just a supplemental, um, piece of instruction for students that follows back up to the, um, direct instruction they already had from the teacher and just gives more practice for them. And of course, use manipulatives, you know, understanding again, how we move from the concrete to the abstract when it comes to math instruction. Science, science is, um, science is the reasons in that we are credited with conditions because of science. Um, and so we have a lot of work that we focused on last year and into this year with how do we improve science? Um, so our goal obviously is to, we want to increase at least twenty percentage points. Again, if I'm looking at our benchmark data for fifth grade right now, it has been above seventy percent for every single one of our tests, including each standard test that they've been giving, many benchmarks along the way, it's been where it needs to be. So how did we, how did we do that? How do we focus on that? We're making sure we have planned time for hands-on experiments. One of the pieces that we know is a lot of our students lack experiences. So how do we ensure that they know what a sifter is? So you have a question about a student goes to the beach and how do I sort through things that I collect on the beach? A lot of students didn't know what a sifter was. So we either pull that into the classroom or on, in STEM. Ms. Ms. Lynch brings a lot of experiences into her STEM class to provide students with those experiences. Sometimes it's not necessarily a lack of knowledge, it's a lack of experiences. So building those experiences in for students. We've also built up, uh, a lot of consistency and capacity with our fourth through our fifth grade. So our fourth grade team last year did a phenomenal job with science instruction and sent up a very strong group of science students. And that is shown as they have provided this next year of science instruction. Because the fifth grade science test does have a few third grade items on it, but mainly fourth and fifth grade instruction. And it's a lot of content for a ten and eleven-year-old to remember. And so, you know, making sure that they came into us strong, so know that fifth grade could do what they need to do. So building that consistency has definitely shown and our data for science has remained pretty strong with our benchmarks. So that is our continuous school improvement plan. And for Black History Month, um, for Black History Month, so I love, I play a song every morning on the morning announcements anyway. But Dr. Shelly does not like my song, but that's okay. Um, during, um, during the Black History Month, I choose a black artist or musician and play their song on the announcements in the morning. Uh, part of, one of our strategies for, um, attendance is if a class has perfect attendance, the class gets to pick the song on the morning announcements for the following week. So even through that, I say focus on picking a black artist or a black musician. And I say a little bit about them. And so just exposing students to different artists and different musicians. And some are like, I didn't know who sang that song. It's like, me either. I didn't know either. So, uh, we have that going on in the library. Um, they, Ms. Smith has shared out with all, uh, teachers, uh, daily books and videos and facts they can use in their classroom about, uh, famous, um, African-Americans in the art class. They have been working on, I Have a Dream, Dream Doors, an art project for all grade levels. And after students learned about MLK's dream, then they came up with their own dreams and they used the mixed media to create their own dream door. Um, and then it says, it's what dream do they have for the future and they open the door, what, what door do you need to open to take? And they open the door, what door do you need to open to take you there? So students then write a sentence or two to describe their dream to the viewer. For a lot of grade levels, we, well, everybody has a morning meeting in the morning. It's the time for the class to come together. They're bringing up a famous African-American person that could be tied, that's already within their standards, bringing them back to that. Or else they're just introducing a new one to them. In STEM, they're talking about inventors. And they watch a video at the end of the class about new African-American inventors. And then talking about them and analyzing their historical contributions. In fifth grade, they are introducing again new African-Americans each day. And they're also reading the book Ghost Boys, which is by a black author with a black main character, and discussing essential questions tied to racism and oppression in our country and having that discussion with them, which has been really great. And I believe, yep, that's all.
Wonderful. Thank you for changing your song.
Just changing your song. Just for this month.
Keep playing.
What was the song that he's having?
It was a good morning song. I will not sing it because we are on here. It is, so I did change it for this year. So now it's gonna have a good day. That's our song to play in the morning now.
Thank you.
Yes, it is better. I will admit it's better. He wasn't making it.
You're very nice little John Sheehardt. That song is awful.
She said it was awful. She said that this one is better.
This one is better.
Thank you, Ms. Motters. Next, we have Ms. Waller from Martinville Middle School. She has been. She's been to Walmart or Amazon.
I tell you. I'm gonna have to do a hand on lesson. Happy school board. I appreciate you. Want you to have the correct shirt size. Thank you. Y'all can use this time to stretch. You need a brain break. You've been listening to people talk for a while. Thank you, Dr. Dick. You're so kind. And in it, I will plug, in it, you do have a gift certificate to the kennel. So come visit the kennel. Yep, call before you come. Make sure the student's back. And shout out to this Grammy Best Book Keeper for putting that together so nicely. I am old fashioned, didn't know if the computer would work or not. So I have paper copies plus, I don't think y'all can really see that. And I dare not use the personal instruction work. All right, good evening, everybody. Let's go. I'm here to give you our C SIP. You already heard twice what it stands for. I was told we have five minutes. You know, it's really hard for me. So we were accredited last year. We're going to be accredited this year. Thank you. Bye. Okay, but that's the truth. All right, here is our status based off of what we did last year. Green, all over the board now, every subgroup. Even our students with disabilities who are green. That's a great accomplishment and achievement, level two across the board. In English, well, when I say across the board, final outcomes. But we did have some red and red and some greens mixed in, but gave us a level two. Science, like Patrick Henry, kind of struggling a little bit with that. So we were at a level three. Chronic absenteeism, level one. We actually made it to single digits last year, finishing at a nine point something percent. Here is our combined rates. That's why we had the colors we had, red for science, green for math. And missing in English by a few points to that green, so giving us a yellow. Here are the gap groups. If you would see, like I said, in reading, students with disabilities are in red. We are focusing very much on them. I am ecstatic to hear that at the elementary level, they're focusing on, at K through two, teaching them how to read. Because when we get at the secondary level in middle school and high school, we don't want to have to teach them how to read. We want to teach them how to comprehend and reading to learn new information. But unfortunately, we have to meet students where they are. So sometimes we are having to go back and pull pockets of time to teach them how to read. And that's very unfortunate. So I look forward to these groups that are going to be coming. And then our black subgroup being a little lower and our multiple races. And shout out to our English language learners, who in Hispanics that you see are excelling. Here's our math achievement group. Again, and we are on page, those that have paper packets. We are on page three, if you cannot see that screen. And as you can see, we were well above that seventy mark in all of our gap groups. For math, and like I said, we saw in reading, if I was to go back a slide, at forty-some percent in reading for students with disabilities was seventy-seven at math. So clearly they can learn. We just have to work harder to get them there with their reading. And of course, that impacts everything, impacts science and history. And again, you see English learners at a ninety-eight percent. So we want to see what they're doing. Here are our goals. We want to increase the number of students passing our English and science, again, because they weren't in green. I'm modest. I didn't put a number. Yes, I want a hundred percent. But if we don't get a hundred percent, we're going to work for the hundred percent. But if we get to the green, we're going to celebrate. So we want to be best state accountability for next school year's accreditation year. We also, at the secondary level, we see sometimes families are not as heavily seen and present as they are in elementary for different reasons. Sometimes the kids are older and we expect them to be more independent. They think they don't need our support, or we feel that they're trustworthy for us to work other jobs. Or hey, I'm just not going to call as much. They know what to do. But we want to keep that parental involvement. Like when you see seven hundred people at Alba Harris Music Concert, we want those same turnout at the middle school. So we want to increase meaningful parental involvement, not to come by because your kid got sent home. I mean, we appreciate that, but that's not meaningful. Not coming by because you want to lay us out about something. But having meaningful parental involvement, a productive conferences, meetings, attending family nights to learn how to better support the students. So we want to increase the opportunities. We have to give them opportunity knowing that they might can't make it to everyone. So we don't want to have just a school year that those fail on the wrong dates, you can't come. So just increasing the amount of opportunities that we invite families and the community to come in and have a conversation, to come in and see what we're doing, to come in and participate with us in the learning. Goal three, we want to, again, because I have to be the first school to say it because the elementary schools didn't mention it. We want to decrease the number of out-of-school suspensions. Again, it's a little different at the secondary level. So we want to reduce that by ten percent. And we had did it the year before, so hopefully we can do it again, but, huh, a little different. All right. And how are we going to do that? Well, for the academic achievement goals, we're doing a lot of stuff. It takes, but I would say our biggest thing is just working together as a team. It is a school effort. As Dr. Brown already said, we cannot teach, well, maybe it was Karen, who talked real highly about attendance. Again, that's a school effort. Teachers call parents, like, hey, Mr. Child, where are they? The attendance secretary, the front office is buzzing, meaning, hey, this child is getting picked up again. So a school effort. We have coaches that's inside the school checking on students' grades and scheduling conferences, because sometimes they'll answer for the coach, but won't answer for the teacher with the grades on falling behind. So just really a school effort and making sure that we are communicating with everybody involved. The students, what their current status is, having to monitor their data as well as sending progress reports home, making sure Power School is current and grades are current, so that they will know their grades. Then teachers meeting with me to, hey, you reviewed the data, I reviewed the data. What kind of action steps can we create together? Working with central office when they come in, Tammy Allen and Carrie Wright and Dr. Charpley and Ms. Adams and Dr. Warren, just everyone to make sure that we're getting the students we need. And I'm not going to read to you all this. You have a paper copy. You can read it, but it's a lot. We're progress monitoring, we're meeting, making sure lesson plans are aligned. But a lot of lesson plans are already typed up for us by the DOE. So getting into classrooms, making sure the delivery is there. Lesson plans is just one step. Making sure the students are actively engaged, because a teacher could be up there teaching their heart out. But we don't want students with their head down or again roaming the hall and doing all those things. So and then another thing, it's making sure we're using experts when we can. So like, hey, we're struggling in science, reaching out to the DABO Science Center, reaching out to Virginia Museum of Natural History that could put some of those hands-on items that we don't have, they could bring to the classroom. Going to the Dan River Basin, we've done that and having guests come in and speak. Action steps for community and parental involvement. Again, we work, we have included a parent on our state Abbott PBIS and they have a representative from Martinville Middle School in the CF. As a parent, I'm not going to say her name because I don't know if she wants me to say it. It's just being told, guys. We also want to, again, like I told you, increase the number of activities. We also have increased the amount of surveys, because we don't want to have activities to just have them. We want to make sure we're doing activities that the parents and community want to attend. So we did a survey at the beginning of the school year, and we've done one in January. And we plan to do another one in March. And we share that data again with the whole, with teachers and staff. And then we brainstorm and see what we need to offer. We also have done a much better job this year in making sure our surveys and our flyers are translated in Spanish so that our English language learners and their families know exactly what's going on and come out and participate. And we saw a huge turnout at our volleyball night and the first performance band concert. And so we're really proud of that. And just also having interpreters we needed, whether it's for a parent-teacher conference, whether it's for an event, because we do have some students that are hearing impaired and families. Here are our goals, our action steps, I'm sorry, for goal three, to decrease out-of-school suspensions. Again, increasing the opportunities for student surveys, not just parents have raised a screener. So we're doing a universal screener more than once a year. That's not only by the division, but Martinville Middle School has implemented a daily PBIS screener. We don't want to wait four months for you to tell us you're doing bad. We want to know that bad. Also, regular communication of the PBIS school-wide expectations. We do that in all kind of fun ways. It's in the handbook. It goes home in the syllabus. It's posted in the halls and bathrooms. For like the other day, I just say it on the morning announcements. Okay, the first sixth, seventh, eighth grader, a student from Mr. McPeek's class, they could call in my cell phone, get your teacher call my cell phone, because I'm using the school phone, so they could hear you. They could give me one of the school-wide expectations, going to want to keep on to the cafeteria. Every grade level had, I mean, my phone, every grade level. And even our students with disabilities could tell me what they were. And they, they just loved it. They were so excited. We're assigning mentors and other interventions to our tier-two and tier-three students. Are using a written tier-two referral system, so we won't have so many habitual repeat offenders. We're also implementing intentionally the SDL standards that the DOE put out into our lessons, and they are written into our PBIS manual as they do come up during Monday meetings with the homeroom, reflective Friday. And like, we wrote new PBIS lessons, the summer PBIS team. And we included and noted those standards as well. And just taking the time to reteach behaviors, trying to be a little bit more intentional with that. Because when a student gets a math problem wrong, we reteach it. But sometimes when they make a mistake, we want to, we forget to reteach it. We're doing better with that. And also just more restorative things in addition to the reteaching, giving them counseling. I had one time some students who messed up the bathroom, so instead of sending them home, I had them all stay up at school and clean up the bathroom with parent permission. So those type of things and use the internal school suspension and resets so students don't have to accumulate so many days outside of the building and losing all instruction. And they just lost the privileges, as Dr. Tally has already implemented. You know, students who are getting into physical altercations, losing the privilege of being able to do extracurriculars. And with that being mentioned, one thing we feel like that decreases discipline issues too is when you increase the amount of students involved in extracurricular activities. We, again, you have those extra people that are looking out for them. Odyssey coaches, robotics coaches, chess club, the sport coaches. Those extra people that they confide in, as well as that team of peers that's looking out for them. And then just something that makes them want to come to school, keeps their GPA up because they're a student athlete, they know they have to have a two-point-o, good attendance, and good behavior. And it gives us a little bit more to be able to dangle over their head. And we have a lot, Callie could tell you, when she came to our eighth grade night, the court and field, football fields are full. So we have a lot. And the other day, we did a spring sports interest meeting. I made a hundred packets and I had to go make more. Every last one was given out and we had to make twenty-five more, and I think we ran out again. All right, so that is our. And I was very intentional with those pictures. I think, I have a picture of your granddaughter, Mr. Williams, your husband is in there, Miss. Your granddaughter's in there, Dr. Tally. Mr. Clemens, your daughter's in here. Sorry, Miss Blackwell, your child does good by school. But I'm laughing. It's not a butt kissing, it's being intentional. And that's what I put in my weekly memo, every week for people to be intentional. Know your students just as well as I knew my audience was here. And you put things that's going to capture people's attention and get them engaged. And I believe in modeling first. And you don't have to ask me what I'm doing for Black History Month. I'm just going to tell you. So first of all, in my memo, I normally put a quote or something, and y'all, school board doesn't, but Dr. Tally is going to get a copy of that. Also, all of our English classes at the middle school are doing units for Black History. So they're reading passages, writing essays, doing added one-pagers. Sixth grader doing a civil rights unit. Seventh grade are doing lesser known African-Americans. And eighth grade are doing athletes, because a lot of their students are interested in sports. Also, in sixth grade history, they've done a study on Dr. King's I Have a Dream speech and created their dreams and posted those in the wall as banners. And seventh grade history, if any of you know Ms. Lowry, she does Black History every day. Three hundred, six, if we were in school, three hundred and sixty-five days, but all one hundred and eighty days. So it's not just Black History Month for her. But she does a little fact each, each day, or a little short snippet of reading. We do have some upcoming field trips or visits. Sixth graders will be going to the Civil Rights Museum. Half will go February twenty-eighth and the other half will go February twenty-ninth to culminate their civil rights unit. And we thank the Endowment Grant for helping fund this. Another shout out, man, I'm killing it with the. Ms. Holland is also coming to teach our, I'm laughing myself. Ms. Holland is coming to teach our students about the Martinville Seven. So we wanted to bring in some local history, and they read a passage on that again. Shout out to Ms. Lowry, who gave us the article, and the contact, and Ms. Woody for following up. And Fahey is coming in March. We couldn't squeeze them in in February. They were already booked. And then our Q. And then our Q school, um, this week will be door announcements and giving a fact about um, or famous quotes. Any questions for moi?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all the energy.
You're welcome. I have to keep myself away after I'm on that.
This is Dr. Dixon in Martinsville High School.
I do appreciate the energy and uh, it's very much uh, needed at this moment. But um, I'm gonna take you through our comprehensive school improvement plan for this year. So uh, as you can see, we made accreditation again this year, uh, but we do have some areas to grow and improve upon. Um, as is with some of the other schools, we have some work to be done in science. Uh, because currently we're at a level three for uh, last year's data. Mathematics is a level one, English uh, level one. Achievement gaps, meaning uh, our students uh, and various subgroups are all kind of performing at the same um, level to some extent. Uh, for both English and mathematics. Uh, chronic absenteeism is an area of challenge. Um, largely because we're trying to continue our efforts to make sure that students are coming to school and that parents are insisting that students come to school. So uh, we're really doing more to communicate the importance of school and we're really doing what we can to try to communicate to parents. So please, uh, insist upon the students uh, coming to school. Um, we want them every day and uh, they do better when they come consistently, so uh, send them. And um, our dropout rate, we've uh, managed to improve to level two. Um, our graduation and completion uh, index um, is at level one. Meaning that uh, our students get a certain amount of points so forth and so on for diplomas that they finish with. Uh, whether it be standard advanced, uh, GED, uh, those kinds of uh, completion um, uh, certificates and diplomas. Uh, so we're at a level one uh, as of last year for that. Martinsville High School's achievement gap uh, in reading, um, like we talked about just previously. These are our subgroups, of course, you have black, economically disadvantaged, ELL, Hispanic, uh, multiracial, students with disabilities and whites. And for the most part, as you look at the data, they're kind of, it's kind of consistently about even. What you will see though is that students with disabilities uh, is somewhat lower than the other subgroups. Uh, and so we'll talk a little bit um, in just a moment, real quickly about the efforts that we're making at Martinsville High School to increase uh, their performance in reading. Uh, you'll see here in our math um, achievement um, gap. Slide right here, we have varying um, achievements for our subgroups. Uh, not quite as even uh, as the English uh, subgroup data uh, show. We have black students at eighty-three percent, economically disadvantaged at eighty-four. Uh, ELL uh, performing extremely well at uh, one hundred and Hispanic at ninety-three. Uh, multiracial so forth and so on. So again, we're finding that our students with disabilities are um, lagging behind. And so uh, a lot of our efforts at Martinsville High School will be to help support and strengthen uh, their student achievement by having uh, certain interventions in place. And uh, you also see white here. So our goals are mixed. Along with our goals, we also will talk a little bit about some of the strategies. And some of the goals are actual uh, strategies for what we'll do to rectify or to strengthen student achievement. Goal number one will be to continue to provide feedback to teachers to ensure implementation and alignment of instruction. Uh, first and foremost, what that means is in jargonistic terms, that means we're going to make sure that we're teaching what we're supposed to be teaching. And uh, we're going to make sure that we're teaching what's in the Virginia State uh, curriculum framework. That's the information that teachers are supposed to be really working from. Of course, they can build upon that, but you gotta have that as a basis. You have to have that as a foundation. And so uh, part of what we're going to do is have teachers have conversations about that with one another. The leadership team, we have conversations about those things. And uh, of course, when we have uh, what's called instructional walkthroughs, we're talking about what it is we're teaching and how closely it's aligned to what we're supposed to be doing. Uh, we'll use walkthrough forms and different um, uh, tools to make sure that we're kind of having those conversations. And specifically, we're going to be focusing in the area of science because um, we'll be walking through all classrooms and looking at all forms of uh, curriculum instruction. But we're really going to have a, a heavy emphasis on science because that's our area of growth. Um, we'll monitor the creation and results of assessments to ensure alignment. Those kinds of things are going to happen in collaborative planning, um, and proficiency of the Virginia Centers of Learning using curriculum framework. Leadership team will use collaborative planning uh, to discuss and help to create some of these assessment data. Uh, we'll have uh, conversations about the good assessments uh, in the nature of uh, our students' um, results. We want to provide ongoing and intentional opportunities for vocabulary development. Uh, a lot of what students run into in terms of obstacles are uh, words that they don't quite understand and know. So what we've done is had a concerted effort to make sure that we kind of front load some of the uh, information that students need to know by um, having vocabulary um, be a prominent kind of thing in our classrooms, on our walls, with word walls and so forth and so on. And the teachers, sometimes they take and they just go over vocabulary prior to going over the lesson just so that you kind of um, get some of those obstacles out of the way. So it's students of reading, they can kind of read for understanding and not get tripped up with um, difficult words. Identify the explicit focus of the lesson. So we're gonna, we're having teachers kind of take a step back and talk a little bit more about, okay, this is what we're doing in that class. And at the end of the lesson, you're supposed to be able to do X, Y, and Z. Uh, it's a simplistic kind of concept, but uh, if you tell students what you're doing and where they should end up. Uh, the science in it is that they tend to help you in their learning. Because I know what we're supposed to be learning, I'll help myself get there. And so uh, you don't have to quite do all the heavy lifting um, in um, by uh, what's called, um, what's the term?
Teacher clarity?
Teacher clarity. Uh, and so also to outline and communicate objectives to include behaviors. Uh, students will exhibit um, the conditions under which the students. So we have a format called BCC, behavior, um, condition and criteria. I'm forgetting all the words. Uh, behavior, condition and criteria. And so the, the students will get a clear expectation of what it is they're supposed to do and then how they'll know that they're successful in doing that. And so those will continue uh, to be a part of what we're going to be doing at Martinsville High School. Uh, we're going to include formative assessments. Uh, I think formative assessments in the most basic, in the most basic definition, the most basic uh, term. Meaning that teachers are going to take whatever data they get from test results and then use that to direct their lessons. And so if we get test results today, that indicate students aren't doing well, then we're going to take that data and then reteach or add whatever uh, information we need to supplement whatever instruction that's needed uh, so that students are successful. So uh, we're going to really hit home with making sure that we are getting formative assessment data and we're using it for a purpose or means. Draw click connections by activating prior knowledge, uh, having those kinds of conversations. We know that uh, the brain does well in drawing connections. So whenever we can have students uh, draw connections with any previous uh, information that they've learned, uh, we're going to do that and address possible misconceptions. Uh, we have a designated school graduation team. Um, if you noted on the previous slide, on our first slide, one of the areas that we wanted to look at was um, the dropout rate. It's in the yellow. We wanted it to be in green. So what we have to do is make sure that we're keeping our eye on um, data that would indicate each and every student and how they're making it towards graduation. Uh, so um, just looking at each and every student, making sure that we know what they need. Having those conversations with students and their parents, you know, this is your year to graduate. Making sure that you're doing this, making sure that you're doing that, and having those conversations with parents about uh, what it is they can do to support their students. Uh, we're going to track student uh, data quarterly, conduct individual student meetings uh, about their academic career plans. Uh, that's a part of the counseling piece that students uh, receive. Um, and utilize student academic and career plan data to provide opportunities in advanced coursework. Uh, completion of CTE credentials and work-based learning experiences. That concludes um, my comprehensive school improvement plan presentation. Uh, it's a lot, a lot of work to be done. Uh, I'm proud of the work that we've done thus far, but we still have a lot to do. Particularly, that's going to require us to just um, meet and collaborate with parents and stakeholders and make sure we keep our eye on our data pretty much at all times, so. Um, what we'll be doing uh, and what we've um, done. Of course, you've heard a little bit about um, Martinsville High School Gospel Choir. Uh, they've been at two functions uh, thus far. They came to Mount Sinai uh, and participated in the uh, Black History Program uh, at uh, my church. But then they also came to um, it's a church right down the road, um, they performed in the uh, Black History Program that they had. Um, I think Ms., what, Ms. um, Ms. Hines shared a little bit about uh, their efforts. They're going to be going to another uh, program. But each teacher in uh, the school is going to provide a lesson on something that uh, uh, African-American, on some major contribution that African-American made within their respective discipline. So math, science, English, social studies, CTE, so forth and so on. And so they'll provide a lesson on that and then they'll provide me with a copy of the lesson. I'll, I'll know when it is that the students uh, will receive the lesson. Uh, so those are the things that are going on in Martinsville High School.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you all, appreciate you.
Ms. Williams, we didn't want to leave you out, so we wanted you to share, if you don't mind, what you all are doing for the Black History Month.
Good evening, everyone. What I was told by someone that also was to share about Kindness Week also, since I am so kind. Yes, yes, that's what I hear during almost every visit, so. Of course, we discussed Dr. Bart Luther King Jr. and uh, the Martin Luther King holiday. But in addition to that, we also incorporated our Black Inventors with a special emphasis on a few that our students can understand and relate various common everyday items to. We incorporated Black History with the letter I and the word inventors. Students learn about Garrett Augustine Morgan Sr., the inventor of the stocklight. Uh, they learned about George Crumb, inventor of potato chips. Uh, Augusta Jackson, inventor of vanilla ice cream, and Alfred Correll, inventor of the ice cream scoop. And Madame C.J. Walker, who perfected the invention of the hot cone, just to name a few. They had the opportunity to complete various learning activities such as graphing, sorting, potato chip bingo, some sensory activities. They also explored the history of inventors and learned about how the invention became popular. And we also shared all of this information with our parents. But the grand finale of all was of course, taste testing all the delicious food items. Our Black Inventor lessons also taught students about how we all may look different on the outside, but on the inside, there are so many similarities uh, or the same. Which uh, also we talked about the uh, comparison of the white egg and the brown egg. You crack it open, it's all the same. You got the yolk and all that same thing. So that also led us into our Kindness Week activities about being kind to one another, understanding our various differences and accepting the different uh, differences with each other. We focused on continued learning about ways to show kindness by accepting of our friends' differences. Showing kindness by sharing, taking turns, giving compliments such as I like your shirt, I like your tie. Our scholastic readers provided daily lessons showing kindness each day and love and appreciation for each other. We involved our families in our Kindness Bingo this year. Students were given a bingo sheet um, of various acts of kindnesses that they could perform at home and asked to complete at least six of those acts, which could be making their bed, helping to take the uh, trash out, helping with the dishes, just saying some please and thank you. All of those different things that uh, it was a various list of things that the kids could do. And when the students returned their sheets, then we're going to take their pictures. We have a bulletin board already put together and we're going to showcase all of those kindness acts and all of those students that were caught being kind on our sprinkle kindness everywhere you go bulletin board. Their bingo sheets are due on February twenty-ninth. And also as a community outreach project, we decided to prepare Valentine's Day cards for um, the oncology center and we donated those. And these were all spent and made cards by our very own students with their own little artwork and stickers. It was their idea, their little plan. And so we hope that those cards put a lot of smiles on the patients' faces last week. And we wrapped up our week with our Valentine's Gala. The VPI fours put on a dance of a lifetime. They had decorations, balloons, bulbs, the stroll lights and lots of music to keep them moving to the beat all day. And did I mention they dressed up in their Sunday best? So they were really hot stuff. And as a special treat, we invited our families and parents to come join us for lunch. And each student greeted their parent with a beautiful red rose just to say I love you. And um, we had over a hundred and twenty-five families that showed up for lunch. But hey, we handled it, everything went great. It was a busy week at Clearview, but it was all worth it for our families and our students. And if you received the um, Martinsville Bulletin, the E edition, I hope you saw our students' pictures on the front page. Patrick Kimries was also there. I could barely print it off, but there is more to this, so um, it was a great week. It's been, it's been fun so far, so any questions?
Thank you for what you're doing.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much.
All right, line to our consent agenda. I need a motion to accept our minutes from our regular meeting on January eleventh as well as our joint meeting minutes from January twenty-fourth with city council. And also our public hearing minutes on January twenty-ninth. May I have a motion? Okay, all right, all in favor? All right, wonderful. All right, now we need to, sorry, got lost here. Here, we did that. We need to, a motion for the financial report to accept that ending January thirty-first.
They should have included with the contract.
Oh, okay. Well, since I didn't include that, can I just, okay, all right. So may I have a motion to accept the financial report ending January thirty-first? All right, all in favor? Fantastic. Now, as the superintendent's report.
Hey, thank you. Uh, visited many classrooms uh, this past month. As you can see with that improvement program and verifying a lot of what the administrators are saying. It's a lot of great teaching uh, going on. And I mentioned that I did walkthroughs with administrators and then I did many with our administrators. And but each time I would give them a summary of some of the things that I saw. So a lot of great teaching. I, I really believe that our standard student scores uh, have done an improvement next year because we're seeing a lot of, a lot of great teaching. Uh, our UVA Superintendent's Advisory Committee meeting was very good. Uh, the focus there, a lot uh, on teacher uh, pay and also mental health, uh, which is one of the things that we talked about and we talked about when we were on the panel uh, previously there too. Uh, and that is to make sure that, that uh, teachers as well as students are recovering from the pandemic and doing well. Because there still seems to be some uh, lag cognitively uh, from that. But uh, it was very, very uh, thought-provoking. Uh, we're technically MLK graphics, uh, which is held by the media. I don't know how many people were there, it's uh, I'm guessing three to four hundred.
It's, I'm guessing three, four hundred. It's very good, you can see that. A wonderful speaker who talked about our roots, going back and looking at the roots of your family, seeing what your ancestors were. Giving people a knowledge or thought very intelligently about their future based on what their descendants did. And it was just a great program. Everyone, a lot of legislators were there, a lot of pastors. It was just a great program. I want to thank everyone who assisted in our teaching the year program. It was wonderful. And we congratulate Marshall High School, Mrs. Saris, who's a great representative, Monica Kelly. Also, Yonah for helping us put those things together and give the cabinet for being there. We're very proud. Went to a meeting and those at the meeting asked me if I was going to give them a new card. And of course, I said never. But I wanted to thank Mr. Barry Nelson for every year. And this year's the new electric card, allowing our teachers to be rewarded such a fashion. SAC team, I want to thank the SAC team with the Superintendent's Advisory Committee, made up of two representatives from the school for their help on our calendar for next year. And I've given the board a copy of this, copy of the press with the proposed calendar, which can be adopted anytime. Can be adopted anytime of this month or next month for the upcoming year. The reason for that is to make sure that the parents can see when school will begin and do that vacation planning, you know, as well as the staff, to give everybody's a heads up. So I, I know I emailed it before, but I'm handing it out physically tonight. And if you have any questions, just let us know. But I want to thank the SAC committee and again the cabinet for helping me nail those things down. And this is the best year for input. Stitify, the group that's on T-shirts, I want to thank them for the opening meeting. It was totally student-led and that was very good too. Students, poor students took the lead. A lot of TV coverage. Again, I want to thank Kelly for getting that, that done. Congratulate the high school. And they have back orders. We wanted to order some shirts, but they don't really have time yet for a lot of in-house orders. And I think they're going to do some things for some of the groups, the booster clubs in school. But if you have a look at the shirts, the Burke professional has done it. Students do a very good job. And I'm just excited about our SAC business opening. And I had some inquiries and intelligence from some other school division about how could we do that? The entrepreneurship program is really taking off. Very glad to have a public budget hearing. I want to thank the board for passing our budget. It's still contingent. Every week when we meet on the cabinet, we talk about the budget and we try to get updates. It seems that Governor Duncan's budget has been injected in the Senate, in the House, now proposed by his. Of course, he has the ultimate assignment. So we're still waiting, but this allows us to hire teachers and do some good things. Hopefully, it won't be in September. I, I heard a date, I don't know if Travis said it today, I heard a date by perhaps March the ninth. Both houses plan to have some type of compromise. So hopefully, we're getting it done early. That, that would be great. Want to again thank our wonderful board for their hard work in terms of this month of appreciation. And our clerks who do work to make sure that we're, we're on point. We had tremendous athletic sports, been one of our, our best winter and going through spring years. Because we had young people involved in wrestling, district swimming, and of course, we were number one seed in regional basketball. So I like what this fall I talked about in terms of just getting young people involved in activities to get them to school spirit. So it's, we have a lot of traveling. I want to thank the board for helping us out last week and pass it high school for, for hosting us. And then the AASA conference, which was just awesome. And a lot of talk and Doug Carey and Tyler, Tyler was here, we'd be real excited about AI. And this is just, it's mind-boggling for me because the guy sat there and created a person. It's scary, really, it's really scary. They could answer any question. He just, on prompt two, just created a person with the likeness of human beings, looked very real, that could, could give you the answer to any questions within probably twenty seconds. And you know, one thing I, you know, we always look, sometimes we look at negative side and I'm very guilty of that. What that type of technology does in the wrong hands. But he talked about the fact of how you could just say in the dissertation, it took most of us years to write. You could, you could write one sentence and, and the computer will do the dissertation. And how our focus on the kids can't be to not use it because we know it's plagiarism out there, but to teach kids how to use it. Because it's not going to go away, like cell phones, it's not going to go away. We can't eliminate cellphone. We can have policies. We'll have to have AI policies. And then, you know, of course, in the hands of some people, it could do a lot of things. They've already had, I think, two political interferers in, in the current campaign for president's year because they copied one of the candidate's boss and had him do robo calls. So that, it's a lot of caution there, but again, think of our teachers, how much less preparation they would have to do with this. They're creating a, a lesson plan based on the blueprints, willing mammoths or something. It's, it's dag and seconds. And it allows teachers to maybe spend time on some of the things we had to do in the classroom, you know, without, and it, it would follow your directions. And so as you said, don't worry about people being eliminated because computers will always need us to program them. Maybe, I don't, I don't know. But that was probably, that and school safety was probably two of the more exciting classes I went to. The school safety, again, I congratulate TJ and our safety committee here because a lot of things they're talking about, we're already doing. And a lot of technology we couldn't really talk about that we're already doing because you don't talk about everything. But I'm, I'm telling you, we're on the cutting edge of a lot of things. Window gunshot stuff, it's just, was amazing to have people there from Washington State, Oregon, Maine, and they had not advanced to that level yet. So feel real good about what we're doing. And I feel real good about the mental health. I, I still brag because people are paying, especially to UVA, for the wellness thing that Dr. World uses to talk to our students about mental health and wellness and can be used at the lower grades as well as the upper grades. And this is tremendous because a lot of students come to school frustrated and upset. And we see the results of those are not very good. So it's just good to see wherever you go, parts of Martinsville there, parts of things that we're already doing. And I thank you.
Thank you.
All right, matters from the board. Ms. White, will you give anything? Ms. Williams? All right, I just have a couple of things. I'll try to keep it short. Again, thank you to everyone and we appreciate everyone for all the different special days. We thank you for the gifts you gave us and that, we appreciate it. The books that you have here from, excuse me, Patrick Henry, we do need to return that to Mrs. Cooper, but it does have inside the, it's from you picking it out and not in honor, I guess, not in memory. It was mostly memory, in honor of you. We want to recognize our school bus drivers. It is appreciation day for them on February twenty-second. And also thank you to Ms. Hines for mentioning the CTE awareness that was on my list to mention this month too. We do have a field day of sorts going on at the high school on Saturday, March sixteenth, I think, if I have that right, for a fundraiser for Mrs. Billups. One of our employees passed away last year on the marching band trip to Disney World. And she was very dedicated to the band and they are trying to start a scholarship for students. And so they're having a field day of sorts and they're trying to get folks to sign up. Please think about it. There is a cost, I think it's ten dollars a person, ten people on a team. And it's a great way, she would love anything like that. She loves sports, she loved activities. She didn't miss a game of any sort and she was there for everybody supporting all the time. So it's a great way to start raising money for that. So if you can come out and think that, has something, ran something on Facebook or the band page, you can get the information there. But please think about at least coming out that day, supporting or getting a group of people together. I mean, we can all do the egg toss or some sort of activity. What is?
Twelve to two.
Twelve to two o'clock, okay. Twelve to two on the sixteenth of March, so please think about that. And other than that, I don't have anything, so I'm going to move on to reminder of dates. Tomorrow, we have a governor's school board meeting. It is a joint meeting that is going to be held in Danville. And I will be attending virtually because of a prior committee commitment. They have moved the meeting from January to February. We do have a lot going on there and Dr. Tally and I will report back in March with some of that information. Little Mermaid is the first weekend in March. Please make sure that you come to Little Mermaid Junior, get your tickets. Fast Track is March fifth and sixth. March ninth is Piedmont Arts Dancing for the arts. They're a fundraiser and I believe we have a teacher at the high school that's participating again this year. So please come out and support him. And then our next school board meeting is March eleventh. Do we have any unregistered citizen comments?
No.
Okay. Communications? All right, remember that one. All right, closed session. Is that from the reading from Ms. Williamson reading? Right here, closed session. Number twelve. Pursuant to?
Okay, pursuant to section two point two dash three seven one one eight, the Code of Virginia. I move at the board convene to close session for purpose of discussing the following specific matters. Discussion and consideration of the evaluation, employment, assignment, and reassignment of employees in marginal city schools as authorized by section two point two dash three seven one one A, one of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act.
May I have a motion to go into closed session, please? Second? All right, all in favor? Thank you, we'll be back.